I'd like to call the August 8, 2011 board session of the Franklin Board of Commissions to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Hennig?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
May Graham?
Here. So all are present. Like as a reminder, it's a little sign outside the door you come in, says, "Please turn off all cell phones." So I would like to request that. First item on the agenda are citizens' comments. Now, the process we follow is that any citizen can come for the commission. We'd like to request that you keep your comments to about five minutes, and then we'll move on. Do we have any citizen who'd like to address the commission at this time? Okay, oh, move right on. Next item on the agenda is discussion of the tentative agenda. Mr. Goings.
The commission has the tentative agenda. Are there any comments on that or additions?
I've got a...I do have one. Let me see if I can pull it up. Regarding...sorry, I should have marked this out here for...where's the...where did...where's the COLA?
4.5.
4.5. We would...we requested a while ago that items with a fiscal impact would be told which fund it's coming out of, and generally, I think we've been getting the numbers on those funds. This refers to what we paid out of the general fund reserve. And so might correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't aware that we actually had the reserve set in a fund separate from the general fund. Have I misunderstood that?
Mr. Dawson, could you address that question about the reserve fund?
That's a specific account. I'll repeat the question, so...
This says that the 2 percent COLA will be paid out of the general fund reserve, and that the impact will be approximately $203,000. There was already a 1 percent COLA budgeted in, and that was just going to come out of the general fund as per the budget. And now there's this claim that the 2 percent's going to come out of the general fund reserve, and I'm not aware of that even being an account that actually...I'm not aware of that being an actual account. Is this...am I correct in understanding that there's just the general fund, and that there's no such...there's not an account that holds?
There's not an account. It's just, it's going to come from a...it's going to come from, I reckon, the savings account or whatever's where it's going...where that money's going to come from. It's not...there's not enough money generated to cover the cost of the COLA, you know, in our regular budget. Because we...when he arrived at the budget back several months ago, we didn't have, you know, any...we basically zeroed...had a zero balance at the end of the budget period, so there'll just be enough...you know, there wasn't enough money to cover the COLA, so...
There wasn't enough money in the budget to cover a 1 percent?
Right. Let me explain to you. What Fred had proposed when he originally did the budget was that he proposed to inject a 1 percent COLA in effective January 1. And that's what he did last year. We basically absorbed it through our...through our current salary base. And we basically, when he finished up at the end of the year, we had enough to cover the 1 percent. But with the 2 percent, you know, it's going to double that number. So we put the money coming out of the reserve to cover that, because probably not going to have enough to cover $200,000, you know, overage.
So that's...so I guess I'm still not really clear. My impression was that we did have a 1 percent increase in January budgeted. Are you saying that's not the case?
Yeah, that's not the case. We did not have it budgeted. But we thought that we could absorb it with the numbers that we had. We, like I said, the previous year, we were able to absorb it within all the accounts that we had. We were able to absorb the 1 percent. So we were basing it on that, that same premise.
Mm-hmm. And...
And so now, when he raised it up, we doubled the number. You know, we were almost break-even in our salary count last year after the 1 percent COLA. So, you know, I was basing it on that, you know, that historical precedent, so...
And so you felt that 1 percent could be absorbed in January?
Right. But 2 percent, we're probably going to...we're going to...it's going to really squeeze everybody.
I mean, I've always been of the understanding that 2 percent is 1 percent plus 1 percent. So if we could absorb 1 percent in January, why can't we still absorb 1 percent in January? I'm a little bit at a loss here. Was that 1 percent always going to be considered to come out of the reserve, which is a...
It's good. Like I said, it's going to be...it's going to be tight. I just went ahead and...I went ahead and budgeted for the full 2 percent coming out halfway through the year, so that we wouldn't put...we wouldn't put a strain on the budget, because I'd have to come back, you know, maybe at the year-end and do a budget amendment. I was afraid, you know, I'd be too tight to do it at the year-end, so I just went ahead and put that, you know, those wages into the budget, so that wouldn't, you know, be too tight on all the managers, because they're already struggling to meet their budgets right now. So I thought...so I just put the full 2 percent in.
I mean...
And normally, that's what we would have done anyway if the budget...if we'd have...if we put it in effect, you know, July 1st, we'd have had a full...a full 2 percent, you know, or the one full 1 percent budget at that point, so...
Right.
And we can cut the number in half. It's just, you know, it's going to be...it's going to be a strain, but we can do that if that's what the commission desires to do.
I mean, I'm just at a bit of a loss as to how this financial impact is...is being listed here, you know, because we asked to...we asked to be told what accounts...
Yeah.
What accounts that's going to be coming out of, and mythical accounts being listed here.
Yeah, it's going to affect everybody's salary account all the way down. Everybody's going to have a 2 percent effective January 1. It's going to affect every expense account, every departmental salary account.
But I am correct in understanding that the general fund reserve account doesn't actually exist? There's no such thing? So I guess I'd like to request that we stick to the way we've always done things, and...or the way, you know, request that we respect what the commission asks, and list the accounts that will be impacted, and that will pay this out. Unless you're saying that actually is such a thing as the general fund reserve account? As in, we're normally told that we're given an account number, we're told what accounts that's going to come out of, but in this case, we're not given any of that stuff, and we're just told it's going to come out of an account that doesn't actually exist?
It's in a budget ordinance. We need a budget ordinance for that. Do they have that attached to it, which has got all the specific account numbers listed?
No, it doesn't.
It should be...there should be an ordinance with that in there.
Okay. Well, if this is just going to come out of the general fund...
Yeah, general fund.
Then I guess I'd like to request that that be reflected in the financial analysis. That's all.
Any other...any other comments? I have one. I was going to address this same ordinance, and I was going to suggest, as I did back last month, that I don't think it's going to pass, but with the economy being like it is, I would like for us to hold off on this until at least October or so, November, to see how revenues are coming in, because we are tight. It's going to be tight next year. And I personally don't see the need to pursue it like next month. I think it'd be more prudent if we just wait and see how revenues are coming in, but that's not going to go, I think. I think I'm 4 to 1 against me, but I just wanted to express that. I think it's sort of risky right now to do that, and...but nevertheless. Okay, and that is...Commissioner Wilder?
Just to respond to that real quick, and I realize we've gone back and forth on this a couple of times, but employees in the past were told that, over the last couple of years, were told that there wasn't...that they weren't getting pay increases because they're in cost of living adjustments in the form of actual salary increases, because there wasn't money available. And so, and since the news came out a couple of months ago that we actually ran an average of about a million dollar a year surplus during that time, we were saying money wasn't available. Employees have been pretty upset, and I think this is a little necessary, just to make things right in those terms. And since that news came out, we've also seen a pretty heavy rash of folks leaving the city. We saw over 100 years...over 100 years experience leave the city last month. And it costs us a lot of money to replace, especially folks in the public safety field, because it takes months and months of paid training for somebody to get out and work on their own. And I think we need to do what we can to make things right sooner rather than later to stop the hemorrhaging of employees, because that costs us money, too, in the short term and in the long term. That's all.
And we sit here today, our city is in good shape, considering other cities. And I think we are in good shape because of decisions that were made two years ago, and also by the department heads and all, really tightened down. And then if we want to maintain, and this is a decision this commission can make, if we want to maintain a 25 percent reserve, then we...in order to do so, we have to make sure that...and back up here, this also helps, which has been in news all the weekend, about bond ratings. I know some people don't care much about bond ratings, but still, that is important in the...for the condition of our city. But I'm not against employees having raises. I simply think that the way the economy is now, and maybe in a couple of months, feel safer about doing it, but I'm just making the point. I'm not...I know I'm not in the majority, so I just...but I wanted to express that. So let's go...any other things on the agenda? Okay, let's move on. City manager's report.
Yes, we've got several reports tonight. I'll start out with Gary Mueller. Do you have anything to report, Gary?
Yes, sir.
Jim with the parks.
Just a couple of informative things coming up, for your all's knowledge. Last weekend, we had the East Frankfurt Quanans Little League Tournament at State Stadium, the 50-year-old tournament, and a lot of people came back for that, which was a great thing for the community in East Frankfurt Quanans. It was a big success, and you all were a big part of that, the city was. Coming up this weekend at the Kentucky River Park, we have the Blues in the River, the Blues Festival on Friday and Saturday night, with events going on all day on Saturday, and Joy and Kelly and Carmen are all a big part of that. And we'll be putting some information in your box Wednesday. It's, like I said, it's Friday and Saturday night, and we'll be having riverboat rides, and there'll be events and vendors all day Saturday at the River Park. On the 27th, we have Keeping the King Center afloat. It's Kentucky River Paddler's Challenge at the Kentucky River View Park, and that's to help the King Center, and it'll be down by the boat dock, and there'll be vendors all through the River Park. And then coming up Labor Day weekend, we have the Cornets and Cannons Festival, September 1 through 4. So we'll be giving you information on those upcoming events in the downtown area.
A question. On the September 1 through 4...
Yes, sir.
In the amphitheater...
Yes.
Is that going to be the first time it's going to be utilized?
Yes, on Sunday, September 4th. There'll be a Battle of the Bands with cannons, and this is a pretty big regional event. There are people coming from eight to 10 different states with brass bands celebrating the 150th anniversary of the Civil War. So we'll have a lot of people from out of state into the community that weekend. And we will be using the amphitheater on Sunday afternoon.
Okay. Then the 1, 2, 3, then, will be other places in town?
Yeah, I'll put some information in your box. There's a concert each day on the Old Capitol Lawn. There's something at the Kentucky History Center on Thursday night. And then there's concerts at the churches on Sunday morning all around town. There's a parade through downtown with all the brass bands. One brass band in particular is coming from Pennsylvania, and they play at Gettysburg quite a bit. And so it's going to be a national event.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley, do you have a report? Ms. Hall?
I'd just like to ask permission to add an item to the agenda. There is a law enforcement protection plan grant that just opened for safety vests. So if I could add that resolution, give permission?
Yes.
Without objection, then we add that to the agenda.
Very good. Mr. Strauss, do you have a report?
I do.
Chief Posage? Mr. Donkey?
I'd just like permission to add a few personnel items that are being worked on. We've just completed some interviews and some hires at dispatch, promotions at sewer. One of the conditional offers from PD, I think, is going to be ready. And when those come to fruition, we'll put them on the agenda if there's no objections.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
No objection, okay.
Chief Wilholt?
First, I'd like to report the results of our prescription drug take-back program from Saturday. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM at the Franklin County Health Department, we received a record number of prescription doses, 59,000 pills is what we took in. So that's items that we've taken off the street, taken out of sewer systems, so... We also unveiled a new window clean that we're giving to people to indicate, kind of like the old operation identification program, that indicate that they've given up their prescription drugs to this program. We're doing this quarterly, so we'll be doing one probably the Saturday before Thanksgiving. But it's becoming a real popular program. So as a first item. The second item is I'd like to add to the agenda surplus radios. I've had a request from Kentucky State University for some surplus radios, the radios that we've taken out of our vehicles and replaced with the new digital radios. And I'll have a list and a request from the chief on that, if that's all right to add to the agenda.
That's great. Good work, chief. Mr. Hackenberg has several things reported on and follow-ups on some older items.
Let's go ahead and hand these out.
Yes.
Last week, when the city manager was out of town, we just kind of went over some things in our public works office to give an update. I just thought tonight would be a good opportunity to come to you and kind of give you all an update on some items. The first item is solid waste, and as I understand, we were given direction to get our program started, January 1st was a target date. And talking to the vendors that supply the cans, and the fact that the garbage can rollouts, and there's also recycling can rollouts being considered, just wanted to share with the board what the cost would be for the garbage can rollouts, and if we want to consider the recycling can rollouts. But for us to get these out by January 1st, we're going to offer several sizes, and we've come up the cost for each...for each can to cover the cost of the program. And we're going to offer three sizes, is what we're suggesting. And in order to get an order in from all the residents, it's probably going to take a couple of months to get a survey out to 11,000 households, and then to make an order. So I guess at this point, we probably need to get some funding identified in order to move forward. So I just wanted to bring it to you all for discussion.
If I may add, Mayor?
Yes.
It is...there is a need to go ahead and place this order because of the reasons that Mr. Hackenberg said. And I would remind the commission that the cost of the carts themselves would be a half a million, and the recycled bins would be an additional 500,000. Is that right?
That's correct. If a resident was to get both cans, it'd be about a million dollars for both, for both items.
So the thing that we need to know is, you know, do you want us just to order the bins, or do you want us also to order the recycle bins in addition to the trash bins?
And you'd like to have some action being on at the...from next Monday's meeting? I mean, two weeks?
Yes, sir. Yeah, our business meeting.
Your business meeting, okay. What's the...how would you feel about that? Commissioner Wilder?
I think this is...I don't know if this is a decision we need to make today, but I'd be happy to put it on...put it on the agenda for our next...our next regular meeting, which is our voting meeting later this month. And could...I can be ready to vote on it by then. My two cents is that we're going to...we're going to need to make rollout recycling bins available to folks. We'll need to secure those bins. We will need to go ahead and secure those bins. I guess if we're...if we are linking the tax credit to receipt of the recycling bins, then I think we're...and we're counting on...I think we're counting on the ultimate fee over time, you know, covering this upfront expense over a period of, hopefully about five years. But I guess we're going to need to secure the recycling bins and distribute them either way. We might think about a one-time. I guess the question for us down the road is going to be, would those...would the recycling bins be distributed for free, or would folks pay a small one-time fee to help offset the cost? That would then get more than balanced out by a tax credit. But that's not really germane to whether or not we purchase the bins. There's, I guess, the heavy thing about this is that it represents a...it does represent a commitment to moving in this direction. And we've discussed not...we've discussed putting the parameters of this thing together, but not actually committing to it until we see what the entire thing looks like, including the billing system and everything like that. So that's my only...that's my only reservation. I mean, I would like to move in this direction, and that's no secret. And I recognize the urgency of this and even agree with it. Do we think...so I guess I'm going to answer your question with a question, which is that how long do you think it's going to take us to work out a...to work out the billing?
We're not certain. We couldn't tell you exactly at this time.
Do we have an update in terms of...
We've gotten...
We have a plant board or anything?
I have a meeting with the plant board Wednesday. But we have gotten some estimates. I don't know if we're prepared to talk about that tonight, but we have gotten some estimates on outsourcing the billing. And we've also thought about what it would cost if we ramped up and did it internally, but it appears that the...that our best option would be to outsource it.
You know, another thought that occurs to me just now is that even if we choose...even if we do ultimately choose not to go to a pay-as-you-throw program, there's still a lot to be said for automated collection. And that's why the Crestwood Pilot Project with these cans got started in the first place during the last term, anyway. So now that I think about it, purchasing these cans doesn't commit us to pay-as-you-throw. I mean, it would be a necessary step if we were to go in that direction, but frankly, I think it's a step worth considering regardless.
I would agree with that, because automation would make our department more efficient over time.
Sure.
And regardless of what the future holds for the program. But having those rollouts give us, as a department, a lot of flexibility to upgrade and become very efficient. So regardless...
Regardless of how we build for it.
And also, we already have the recycling containers, the 18-gallon containers, out on the street today.
Yeah.
So that's one, you know, item we could work in in the future if we wanted to provide or sell or do some type of additional cart for those who choose to have a rollout cart in the future also. So the garbage rollouts are the critical item for us to go to any type of a program.
Commissioner Turner?
Just a quick question. Do we have any idea financially how much it would save us in labor costs if we went to a rollout cart?
I would add workers' comp.
And workers' comp as well. That number varies based on losses and...
Sure, sure.
This is a one, three, and five-year projection. Going to a rollout garbage cart, looking at what the fully funded department would look We made a lot of assumptions in calculating the cost per resident, but just a quick overview would be going to a rollout cart with recycling, a pay-as-you-throw program. Over the five-year period, we anticipate a 15 percent drop in what our tipping fees would be at the landfill, and likewise, a 15 percent increase in our recycling revenues. It's kind of an assumption we made.
And that's a pretty conservative estimate, to my understanding.
And I don't know what that is. That's just a...
Yeah.
An estimate based on talking to some other communities, and so it's just an assumption we plugged in here.
It's a safe assumption.
Another assumption would be, you know, what size carts people would request. And the bottom column, we just projected 25 percent of the people would want a 35-gallon cart, 50 percent of the people would want a 65-gallon cart, and the other 25 would want the large 95-gallon cart. So those are some of the assumptions we made, in addition to the labor over the five years would actually decrease, and that's in year five versus year one. So there's savings there through some efficiencies, and we would have a line item in our account to buy automated garbage trucks, and so that would be implemented over this five-year period. That would allow us to look at our labor in five years.
So if I'm correct in reading this correctly, so for like, for example, year one, the cost per customer would be $16.54, or is that a...
Well, I'm going to let Tom kind...he helped me, and Steve Dawson helped me, but I think with the...one thing to note is, we went to the year five when the full efficiency was realized, and we recognized that we put the rates at year-five rates, and we would be operating maybe short-term as a deficit. We would...because it would cost more, because we would not have the labor savings at that point. So we put the rates at year five, which we start today.
So the cost per customer on average is the...so if I'm looking at year five, would be $14.24, is that correct?
It would be for $12 for a 35-gallon cart...
Oh, I see.
Then $15 for a 65...
Is that an annual basis? Is that an annual...based on annual cost?
That would be a monthly cost. That would be a monthly cost. And then $17 a month for the largest cart to be fully funded through the fee. And one thing this chart does not really account for is if there's overflow, there is not a number to plug in because right now we wouldn't really know what to anticipate that number being. So these are just some of the numbers we wanted to share with you all so if we have a follow-up, we can have a discussion.
These are, these are really helpful numbers. I think you've been putting them together.
Could be the first year.
I don't, I don't want to spend too much time on this out of respect for all the folks who are, who are waiting around for our discussion items and thank you all for being here. But in terms of the, in terms of the graduated fee structure here from 12 to 15 to 17, that's a pretty classic bulk pricing structure where you pay less the more you use.
Right.
And considering the, the way we're trying to incentivize the program, I think it'd really make a lot more sense to graduate it in the other direction where people pay more, you know, where people don't get bulk, bulk discounts on the amount of garbage they're, they're throwing away. I know that a lot of the cities that have, have graduated rates for this sort of thing actually graduate them in the other direction so that it's, it's more expensive to throw away more.
That's where, that is, $17 is for the largest container.
No, I, no, I understand that, but it's not, you're paying, you're paying less per gallon the more you throw away under this system. Does that make sense? As in, so what are the gallons again? You've got a?
35-gallon would be the $12, 65-gallon would be 15, and $17 would be for the 95-gallon.
Yeah, exactly. So let's, let's take out the fives, you know, just for the sake of easy math. Because the, the 60-gallon can is almost twice as, twice as large as the, the 65-gallon can is almost twice as large as the 35-gallon can, but it doesn't cost even close to twice as much. People get a massive price break per gallon of, of garbage thrown away when they graduate to the higher cans, which is the principle of bulk purchasing, right? I mean, the more, the more you pay for something, the less per unit you're, you're paying for. But since, and, and that's, and that's an incentive system, the reason bulk purchasing is, is graduated that way is that's an incentive to make people buy more, right? You make the unit cost cheaper the more you buy. But this being an incentive to encourage people to waste less, the, it looks like the, the graduation's running in the wrong direction where people are paying, people should pay, ideally it would either be, be flat where people pay the same amount per unit for each can so that the, the rate for the smallest cans is much less than $12, but the rate for the largest cans is, is more than 17. So it's, it's either, it's either one-to-one ratio or even the other way around where people pay less per unit the less they throw away. But graduating it this way just encourages folks to, to buy the largest cans and to, and to throw away as much as possible. Does that make sense? And that's, and, and I know that a lot of the places we, that do, or at least a lot of places I've talked to that do pay-as-you-throw programs, if they do do a graduated pay scale, it's, it's along the lines I'm talking about and not, not what we're seeing here. Other than that, I mean, the numbers are good, but I would really, if we have an agreement on the board, really like to see them adjusted so that there's not the incentive for people to throw away more.
May we, just that the next work session, maybe you, you know, we could just get some feedback from you after you have time to really look at the, the numbers and some of the information.
It's only $5 more from a 35-gallon to a 95-gallon.
What's, what was the comment there, Commissioner? I didn't hear.
$5 more from, for a 35-gallon, being the smallest would be $14, and it'd only be $5 more to get a 95-gallon.
Okay. I think these numbers are, are put together to give you all an idea of what the cost would be.
Sure.
And then you all can do with it. As you see, the bulk of our cost is not in the tipping fees.
Sure.
It's in the, getting the trucks from door to door.
Sure. And that's a fixed cost regardless of how much.
That's a fixed cost regardless.
Understood.
A lot of communities that use the pay-as-you-throw have tipping fees three and four times while we do.
Sure.
So just to directly reflect, we can have like a base cost and then we can have a disposal cost. But that disposal cost is probably going to be more along the lines of this if you just look at how much trash goes into that can. Now, if you want to say, take the 35 down to make that the incentive, then that's, that's, you know, the price setting that you all do. But I felt like you all need to see the real picture and then make your decision based on that.
Appreciate that. Okay, okay. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner May wanted to make a comment. Then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Turner.
I just had one bit of information I wanted to share. I forgot when we started buying the, the garbage trucks to be where they could use the, they could be fitted with the.
Tipper.
The tipper. How many do we have now?
10, 10 garbage trucks.
I meant with tippers.
10.
We have them with, okay, that's right, that's right. We, we started a few years back, I forgot what year it was.
About five years ago.
We started looking at if the city did want to go in the future to the, the garbage trucks with the tipper that could pick up the can. We didn't, we weren't looking at a pay-as-you-throw. It was a automated pickup, I couldn't think of the word, automated pickup. And so the trucks are already in place and the, but the cost of those is about $100 and...
$155,000 to $160,000 for the fleet that likes the trucks we have today.
But I guess my concern is because the tipping fee in, in our area is so low, I don't know that there's an advantage to go into the pay-as-you-throw program where people, I mean, I'm all for recycling and I want to see the recycling increased, but I don't know that charging based on the container sizes would increase the recycling. I don't know, maybe it would. But I guess my concern looking at these numbers is the current fee is $5 per month and we pick up everything. And if we go to a program where you've got the 35, 65, or 95 choice, gallon, gallon can choice, it's still going to cost people more even if they use the smallest container. That isn't necessarily the case there. It would be factoring in tax credit. Okay. I'm just trying to converse.
But that's fine. Just, I'm just throwing out thoughts and ideas because I don't, I have to go back and look at these numbers again and really think about it, but, and then I'd want to know more about the, the tax credit, how that's going to work because off the top of the bat, it makes, the way the budget is, I don't know that we can do a tax credit and make it, make it, I mean, we can obviously make anything work out, but in the long term, I'm afraid we would see a negative return or see a big decline in revenues for the city based on the, the tax rate not being able to keep pace with the tax credits. So if we could get some solid figures on that, I guess that would come from our financial folks.
Okay. Commissioner Turner, you're next, then Commissioner Wilder.
I just, we have a pretty hefty agenda on our plate today. I'd like to see if we can put this as an item for our work session to discuss and that way we can discuss also any type of tax credit and/or penalties if you do not follow that, you know, because we're still have to answer those two questions and I would request of the board that we move that and move on with our agenda.
Okay. This is, yeah, this is a lot of information to absorb. I agree. You can pick this up.
What we, what I understand we want to have done here is that okay for the, for our regular business meeting that we have on the agenda the purchase of the, the rollouts, right? That's what you want?
Yes. Both, the question applies both to the rollout carts and to the, the rollout trash carts and the rollout recycled bins.
Okay. So I understand that we'll just move forward with that then, okay? You got another item?
I just wanted to bring, we had a, the sewer department and Public Works had a public meeting with the Crestwood Neighborhood Association explaining this, both the sanitary project that they are underway in the design phases, answering neighbors' questions. Also, we had prepared storm sewer easements for the neighborhood, met with the neighborhood and explained the alignment of what the storm sewer, where it would be proposed to go. And so we anticipate receiving some easement signed back from the neighborhood and explained there's no money in the budget today for the project, but just reached out for the neighborhood to answer questions and to get easements to see where we might be in six months that I'll be closer to a stormwater project. Also, I'm waiting on a cost estimate from a local engineering firm. We looked at, asked the question to the transportation cabinet about changing traffic flow on Main Street from one-way to two-way and they explained what the process because it would impact their streets also. And we'd have to get a permit from the transportation cabinet to pursue that. And as part of that permit process, we'd have to do a traffic, conduct a traffic study. So I'm awaiting the cost estimate on the traffic study. Lewis Street, we're going to paint the parallel parking spaces on two blocks of Lewis Street that are kind of undefined at this point. And the question was brought up about two-hour parking maybe, so we're going to, we're going to follow up on that through our traffic committee, discuss two-hour parking on Lewis Street, whether that's, answer that request. Wilkinson Boulevard, we have a pedestrian path through a grant that we're, started last week constructing. C.C. Moore and our street department currently are working on grading out the trail. It looks like about two months of construction time, so just, you, you are out and about, might want to check out that project. That's going to be done hopefully this fall. Another update on the Broadway Bridge, talked to the transportation cabinet, a bridge engineer. That bridge is currently not being maintained. It's closed to pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Remember last spring, there was a boat dock that got wedged under that bridge and they closed it at that point and there are no plans to reopen it. And in fact, he said they're pursuing funds to demolish it and tear it down. So that's the update I got from transportation. City Hall Roof Project, a structural study to look at our existing roof to see if it's a candidate for a green roof. It costs $7,600. The firm does have experience in, in a green roof project here in Frankfurt at the, the school system. They expanded their technical school, looking at a green roof on the existing part. It was not feasible, but they did design and, and work on a project to put a green roof on the expanded part. So we have a proposal from that firm to look at our city hall roof. This rain we had today, we had, I think, counted seven leaks, so it's, every time we get a rain, we have a major problem. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Books a timeframe on that. How long do you think that would take to get the study?
Probably about a week or so for him to come in and study. Give whether it's a candidate or not. Now, there's another step involved. Once he determines it's a candidate, then we'd have to hire a firm to actually do the design of the green roof. So that's another phase of the project would be the design of a green roof. Or probably more likely it'd be maybe an area of the roof that's a candidate, not maybe the whole roof. So there'll be a follow-up design after it's determined whether it's a candidate or not.
Okay.
Do we need to take any action to, to keep that moving along at a healthy clip?
And then the last thing, we went and looked at Wilkinson Street diagonal parking. We would gain at a 30-degree angle, one additional parking space on Wilkinson between Main and Wapping Street. And so not a lot gained by going to the diagonal and that's a pretty, pretty small angle for back in the year. Usually you want a 60, 45-degree angle, so 30's a pretty tight angle, but we just want to report that what we found.
What does a 45-degree angle reduce the size of the driving lanes to?
The 30, the 30-degree reduces the driving lanes both up to 11 feet.
Right.
So if, we really don't want to go any, any more narrow than that.
It's just once.
To 11 feet?
Each.
Each, right.
For a 30-degree. Yeah, for the 30-degree. The 45, it wouldn't be feasible.
Okay. But you can't, but you can't tell us how, what, what 45 reduces the sizes to?
I could go back and look at that.
I'd like to know. I don't even know right now, but if you could put it in my box or send me an email.
Okay. To go less than 11?
Yeah, I'd like to know what, what a 45-degree angle does to the size of the driving lanes specifically.
All right. That's the last item on the report.
Now, if you see, Commissioner May, you have some other question there?
Just that, that's just, they're just looking at the probability, not the probability, but just the width and they're not really, they're not going to reduce that down to angle parking, right? That's just.
Information.
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 Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. No, just information. Information that I think already exists. I'm just.
Thank you, Mr. Heckbart. Bradley. Mr. Dawson, did you have anything to report? Okay, I think that concludes our staff report.
All right, next item is old business to have a new business. Commissioner Wilder?
I do have a few pieces and I'll try to burn through these real quick out of respect for the folks that are waiting for the discussion items. When we heard the presentations a while ago on open source software and specifically Drupal in regards to the city's website, I think I, I mentioned in the general agreement that we'd be happy to accept an offer from Walt Baldwin who does IT infrastructure for a, for a number of Fortune 100 companies to just pro bono help city, help city staff kind of navigate some of that software and some of those programs. I had a conversation with Charlene in the, in the department the other week and it was just, you know, I was just asking, asking how, how all that was coming along and she said that she was getting to learn, getting to learn this, this stuff, but was, was working on it. And I reminded her of Walt's offer if she wanted to talk to him. And Ramona mentioned that she probably shouldn't do that unless we, we brought it up again in a commission meeting. So I was just hoping that the, the commission could agree that we don't have a problem with Charlene getting some, some free help on this from, from Walt as long as he's offering it.
Yeah.
I'm seeing some yeses, okay. Great. Can we, can you pass it on to Charlene that she's welcome to contact Walt and I'll even send in?
What's the ultimate outcome that we're looking for, the goal we're looking for?
Migrating the city's website over to Drupal. Is the ultimate goal, but in the short term, you know, Drupal's open source so they can access it and play with it right now, but I think they're, they're still just looking to learn the system and what it can do. And we've got an expert on the subject who's willing to offer some, some help for free. Without objection, I'll send an email to the, to Fred following up on that with the, the contact information. Do we have an, an update on the joint, on a joint Green Vision meeting with the county and the Frankford Plant Board? Are we on for, for next Monday?
I haven't heard since, since we had a Green Vision meeting, I think it was said that, you know, the city was most compliant.
Yeah.
I haven't heard back from county government or the plant board.
My, my understanding, and I think, I mean, you would, you would obviously need to follow up with representatives from each body, but my understanding is that I think the county's good for the 15th and the, and that the plant board is too and that... 15th, and that the plant board is too. And that the plant board's even offered the clubhouse, if I recall correctly. But that's just off the top of my head. So, I didn't know if we had gotten official.
I have not had any official correspondence from either body.
Okay.
I know that some members of Green Vision were going to meet with the judge. And then a member of Green Vision was going to meet with the, with the executive director of the plant board. But I haven't heard any report on that. Of course, I've been out of town. I apologize.
Sure, sure. I understand. I think that the, because they were, the plant board and the county were looking into seeing whether or not their bodies could meet at 12:30 next Monday, in place of our regular work session. You might follow it up and just, and see in that case, because I, because I think the word on the street is that that's going to, that's going to work out. But let us know so that we can prepare accordingly.
Okay.
Do any other commissioners want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could get an update real quick, because this is, this is, I expect this, that stormwater is going to be one of the topics that will be addressed at the joint meeting between the county and the, and the plant board. And that's something that we've all agreed needs to be worked out, at least somewhat in tandem with one, if not both of those entities. Is there, do we have an update on, on how, how that process is going? Is there anything we need to discuss or figure out before?
Well, the city's moving forward with our plans. And we had a meeting, what was it, two weeks ago, Mr. Scott? And we were going to look at employing the consultant. And do you have anything on that? Or?
The RFQ's pretty much prepared. I guess I'm really waiting to find out if the county's going to be a participating party, and in what capacity. But once we've got that, we're ready to go.
Is that something you think we need to discuss with the county at a joint meeting? Or is that something that y'all can, can work out? Good either way. I'm looking to know which way we need to go.
I think we could, could address that through their structure, rather than having a meeting with them. I think we could.
Well, my point just being that we're, whether or not it's this Monday or later, we have this, this joint meeting tentatively set up with them to discuss a few subjects, including stormwater. So, this would already, I mean, this will already be part of that. This subject will already be part of a joint meeting agenda. So, it's a good enough opportunity if there is anything for our two boards to discuss. But if you, if you think it can be worked out in other venues, that's, that's fine, too.
Well.
But I'm not, I'm not suggesting calling a meeting.
I think there's a general, a general level of agreement that has not been formalized.
Okay.
And I think whatever the proper format for formalizing that, at the time that the county judge wanted to put it on their agenda and felt like it was appropriate on their agenda. And I intend on meeting with him Wednesday, so I can, I can ask him, you know, what the will of the court is. I can't, I couldn't anticipate, you know, whether he feels like they want to have the votes right now to move forward. But the general, it's a positive feeling that we get. They've been participating with us on some of the seminars and webinars that we've watched. And their planning director has been attending those as well as the Green Vision meetings. And so, I think there's a general spirit that, you know, we're working together, but we haven't formalized that.
That's great. Thanks, Fred.
And if, Mr. Scott, I might ask, do we have to have the formal agreement from the county before we bring the consultant on?
I don't know that we have to have it at that point. The real question is, to me, is what body is going to hire this consultant? Is it going to be a city venture or a city-county venture? Which obviously makes up the selection committee of who reviews the statements of qualification.
My two cents on that is that I don't mind. This is just my two cents. I don't mind that, I don't mind us, us paying for it. I think it's, I think it's a, maybe the larger question is whether or not the county wants that input in the process.
To me, the, the paying part is not the issue. It's, you know, if you've got, if you've got six people on the selection committee, let's say, you know, are all those six from the city? Or is it five and one, four and two? That's the big question right now, is who is actually going to be doing that selection process?
Okay. Thanks, guys. Just in the progress report. Appreciate it.
You got more?
One more. I got, I've gotten a few calls about the garbage fee refund from folks who got notices. And I've seen a couple of the notices. I don't have any copies here. But from folks who got notices about the refund, who called and found that they weren't eligible, and who in fact were not eligible for the refund. I guess I'm curious to know who all those notices went out to. Did y'all get any of these calls? They've got, I saw the notices. They've, they notify people about the refund that's available and what you have to do to qualify for it and the contact information. And it lists all of our personal numbers and email addresses, if they have any, any questions or anything. So, I guess I'm surprised. I heard, I heard from a few people about it.
I got one.
I guess I've got, I've got two questions about that whole thing. Why, why weren't those notices specifically targeted to folks who are eligible for the refund? I guess that's my first question. And who, and who did the notices go to? Because it doesn't seem that everybody got them. Yeah. Whoever can answer it?
I can't.
Those notices didn't go out in the mail. They're, they're at the, they're at the desk. And when folks come in, they, they can, they can pick up one of those notices that kind of further explains what's going on. So, that's, that's, that's what's going on there.
Okay. Well, in that case, in that case, I don't have a, in that case, I don't have a concern. Thanks, Steve. Great. I'm looking forward to the discussion items, once anybody else has any more business.
Any other old business? Regarding this joint meeting you're speaking of for next Monday, if we have a joint meeting, are we going, what are we going to do with the rest of our agenda? I would like for y'all to think about that. Because if we're going to have another joint meeting like we had last Monday, we took a recess after the meeting was over. You know, we had a couple of discussions. Now, I think we need to give Mr. Goins some direction on that. Is it going to be, is it going to basically consume our agenda? Or what have, Commissioner Turner?
My recommendation is that we do, similar to what we did last time, because we know the county likes to keep their meetings short, and we like to keep our meetings long, to, to have a discussion, a joint meeting, then recess, and then come back and discuss and talk trash. That would be my recommendation.
I agree.
Now, and we can continue to, if we have the meeting, I understand it's, it's been worked out that we're going to be at the, at the plant board?
If we're ever going to be.
That's off the top of my head. I was, I was wondering if you had official confirmation of that.
Well, that's another issue I wanted to just address a minute. But the, so anyway, the, we will continue after recess to meet, hopefully. If we meet up there, we're going to come back here.
Yeah.
Right? All right. Now, just, just as a sidebar, what has been discussed here about this meeting on next Monday, I've had very little information about it. I don't know, obviously, there's good discussion going on around by others and, you know, to get this all worked out. And I'd just like to feel that our city manager represents us. And before we even have the final things can be done, that it becomes through our city manager. I just, I just get a feeling that there's, to me, too much conversations going on and decision-making going on when we're not in a formal meeting. And we talk about transparency. And so, if we want to be transparent, I think we should bring it together and discuss it. Have no objection personally discussing any topic. But I would like for us to follow certain procedures. Okay, new business?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have to respond to that?
Certainly, you can.
With all due respect, we have discussed this repeatedly in multiple, we have discussed this, this joint Green Vision meeting repeatedly in multiple work sessions so far. And, and as somebody who's been participating in the Green Vision meetings themselves, I've personally made a, made a point to try and stay out of the, any decision-making process in terms of setting a meeting time. And I've just communicated the Green Vision group's information, you know, to Fred and to this body and work sessions and things. But, you know, and I do that out of, out of a degree of courtesy. But when it comes to setting, you know, meeting dates and times, that's the, that is the purview of the executive authority of the city. And with all due respect to our city manager, our city manager is not the executive authority of the city, our KRS and our own. And our laws are pretty clear that the majority of the board of commissioners are the executive authority. And the only, the only decisions that the, that are ever discussed outside of, outside of regular meetings are the decision to add, are discussions of adding certain items to agendas. And any, any item can be discussed. We've already discussed a number of items today that haven't been on the agenda. Anytime, you know, anytime a majority of the board of commissioners decides to add an item to the agenda, by its very nature, that's a decision that can't, that's very hard to make in meetings. Because you're deciding what to put on the agenda for a meeting. And if we had this, we had, had this, this rule in place where we could only decide to put items on meetings within meetings, the executive authority of the city would never be able to exercise any executive authority over the agenda. And the only decisions that are made, the only decisions that are made being decisions to add items to the agenda, that's in the interest of transparency. Because like I said, we can discuss, we can discuss anything, whether or not it's on the agenda. The decision to add something, add something to an agenda is merely a decision to publicize what we're going to discuss in advance. As in, it's a, it's a decision to make the process more transparent. So, I, I just, I have to insist that it is the, it is the commission's prerogative to set the agenda. And, and it is in the interest of transparency for the agenda to be as thorough as possible. That's all.
Yeah. Oh, so you've got new business?
I just got one quick thing. Mayor, responding to a call from a concerned citizen this week, I've found out that there was no, and Mr. Parrish may be able to help me. I talked to Mr. McCarty, but that there was no minimum age requirement to be accompanied by an adult at our swimming pools. I would certainly like to request of the board that we look into putting a minimum age requirement in there. Because I think that, not only for liability reasons, but for just the overall health of our younger population who may be going to the pool, we want to make sure that they have a safe environment that's, where they're adequately watched. So, I would request with the rest of the board that at some point in the near future, we begin discussion of changing that policy.
Yes.
Happy to discuss that.
You know the new business. Commissioner Headen?
Speaking of, maybe want to add things to an agenda. We started out this year with 11 goals. Restructure, restructure the trash fee, sustainability and efficiency, build strategic partnerships with quasi-governments, have a more transparent and accessible city government, support the rock, the parts and wreck with an aquatic center, make government more user-friendly, study feasibility of stormwater, increase employee morale, support a strong arts community, explore ways to reduce cost of healthcare, and ensure a high level of public safety and other essential services. I feel we're on target with all 11 of these. And I would like to make a motion, mostly since the fact that we still haven't got any help for our city clerk to cut back on meetings twice a month.
Is that something, that was the direction that we wished to go? Is that something that we would have to do by ordinance?
It is.
Meeting times and dates?
Yes.
So, you should, oh, excuse me, wait.
I would concur with Ms. Commissioner Headen on that. I, I think that it was important, primarily because we were, especially for Commissioner Headen and I, two new faces on the commission, to get an idea and a feel of how city government operates. And I think by us having a meeting every month, we've been able to do that. And as you mentioned, I agree that we are on target with most, if not all, of our goals. But I do think that our, our city clerk is, is overworked. And city staff haven't stayed for later meetings. So, I would concur with cutting it down.
What, two a month, is that it?
Yeah, I'd have an option as well.
So, what you're suggesting, if I heard you correctly, that you'd be in favor of preparing an ordinance to change our meeting times from first four Mondays to what we did the last time, like it was prior? That was, it was meeting two times prior, to revert back to what that was? That's what you, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, but maybe not have like the Thursday as an option, but maybe continue to have a Monday. That way, people know it's not just a random day.
All right. Commissioner May, did you raise your hand?
No, I didn't.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder?
On principle, I, I agree with that. I think, I think we still have some, some discussions to start there in terms of the trash fee. But it takes some time to change an ordinance anyway. So, we can get those discussions done. Although, I would actually remind everybody that the, the previous ordinance actually had three meetings a month. And that one of them was just kind of an optional meeting that was regularly canceled. And I think that's a, I think it's good to have that, that optional regular meeting in reserve because it has, has an unrestricted agenda. So, if we, if we feel that we do have a lot of stuff we need to discuss, we can just keep that meeting on standby. So, my, I guess my suggestion would be to maybe ordain out the, the third midday meeting, but keep the first Monday meeting in place and just regularly cancel it until or unless we hit. Because every now and then, something comes up. I see we've got folks in the Humane Society here. That's, that's, that's just an easy example of something that, that comes up on occasion. Every now and then, something comes up, there's kind of more of that discussion. And it can really be on the fly sometimes. And we have the option to.
Call it.
Yeah, or just not cancel it. So, that's.
Yeah, but I'd be happy to ordain out the third, the third Monday and regularly cancel the first one.
And Mr. Moore, would, Mr. Moore, would you?
Could I ask for a little clarification on that?
Yes.
Do you want to hold the, the first work session on the first or second Monday of the month?
The way we used to do it was, was the first work session would be on the second Monday of the month. And then, two weeks later would be the voting meeting. I think that's a, that's a pretty good.
And then, we, and then we had, if we're going to keep the second Monday of the month as the work session, then the former ordinance provided that the Thursday following that second Monday meeting would be a work session that could be canceled.
Yeah, but I think we would like, instead of doing that optional work session, be canceled on Thursday, to do it on Monday. So, there is still some sort canceled on Thursday, to do it on Monday. So there is still some sort of consistency there with that. So people, you know, know, if it's Monday, it's like if it's Sunday, it's meet the press. If it's Monday, it's the Commission, you know?
And keep it five o'clock?
Yes.
So that's first Monday, second Monday, and fourth Monday. And then, but the first Monday would be the optional meeting? Is that the, or do you want to make it the third Monday, the optional meeting?
Second, third?
So we're talking about second Monday, third Monday optional, fourth Monday voting?
Right.
Yeah, great.
Okay. All right, any, any other new business?
We're pretty much just going to meet the second and fourth Monday. We'll use the third Monday if we need to vote on something, just so. I just wanted to be sure. I was trying to think in my head just logistically how that might work with staff, but we can, we'll figure that out.
Just a little clarification on that comment, Mayor. We wouldn't be able to vote on that third Monday. It would be the fourth. So only vote on voting meetings. That motion failed.
Okay, so the goal was just, so it would not be restricted agenda. And that's what, okay.
Right.
That's why I wanted to clarify, I was thinking, we're not going to vote or we are going to vote. Okay, so it'd be two non-voting if needed and one voting meeting. Okay.
We've got a lot of folks who've been very patient, patient with us.
All right. Next, I guess, more new business. We're down to discussion items. And, Mr. Goings.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think any department heads who do not feel like you would be involved in any of the discussion items may leave at this time.
Sure. And I'd also like to, because I see that Diane Wellman showed up here, and I, I assume she would like to communicate with us. Could we, could we, and I'm sorry to make you wait.
It's okay.
Wait more to do it. Do you think we could, because that's not a discussion that necessarily requires any other, any department heads. Do you think we could discuss, discuss her after, after we've dealt with KCDC staff?
Just, yes.
Is that, without objection?
No objection.
Yes. Number two.
Oh, yeah, I guess I, I guess I know. Um, well, we really want to thank the KCDC board members and representatives who are here today. I see Dave Weller and Libby Marshall and Ralph Bar and some other folks who are, who are, I assume are, have an interest in the preparation of the development plan for downtown Frankfurt. I see Kelly and Joy. Well, I see a lot of people here. Uh, the, the impetus for this discussion, I think, came up, has been in the place for a few months. The Commission's had an interest in seeing a development plan for downtown. Um, and I, to give the Commission an update, I, I attended the KCDC board meeting, the Secita board meeting last week. I thought it was a really good meeting. Um, and, uh, I don't know if the mayor wanted to hear the update or not. Um, we talked about a few things, but one of the things is the, the concept of a development plan for downtown Frankfurt. And I was hoping, uh, before we get into that, that we can maybe hear from, uh, well, the mayor's back now. I was, I was on the, I was on the verge of, I said that I attended the KCDC board meeting last week, and that they had the preparation of the development plan for, for downtown Frankfurt on their agenda as well. So there was some discussion, discussion there. Um, I think, uh, as the Commission has discussed in past work sessions, we have an interest in seeing this happen. Um, I think, uh, obviously, we like to see KCDC involved and as well as the Riverfront Development Plan taken into account and, and DFI involved, et cetera. But seeing as how there was discussion of this at the, at the last KCD work session and seeing as I think your all's gears have already been turning a little bit in this regard, I was hoping maybe we could just hear from, hear from some of the KCDC folks we have here.
I'm Libby Marshall, Chair of the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation Board. And thank you for asking us to speak preliminary to your discussion. But I think that we all agree that we're here to listen to the direction that you might offer on this idea and would be responsive to that. So if you'll allow us to listen with interest, we'd look forward to hearing your discussion.
All right. Do you have your initial comments you wanted to make?
Um, I guess introductory comment would be that, uh, Ms. Marshall came in this morning and talked with the mayor and I, and, you know, KCDC wants to know if, if the Commission wants to do, wants them to do, uh, downtown master plan, including all the stakeholders.
The, uh, that's what I, speaking personally, uh, all the conversation I had with, with considered the stakeholders over the past was that people wanted to have some kind of a plan. Uh, I guess it would be the, the process you go through, uh, and from my point of view, it would, certainly I would be supportive of a plan. And I would like to feel that that's pretty much what we would pretty much say, that we favor it, as Commissioner Wilder said, and as Mr. Goins has said, as long as it's the stakeholders, all of them are involved in this. And, um, and you, you've got a good board, I mean, for as I'm concerned. Now, I'm speaking for me personally, I don't, maybe other comments will be made, but I would, for as I'm concerned, I'd be saying, yes, I think it'd be good to have a plan. And then turn it, let you all know that formally or however you'd want to do it, through a vote of the Commission, and, um, and then let you all take that and address how it's going to be done. That's my personal opinion. Commissioner May?
Just a second. We have folks from Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated. I don't know if they wanted to say anything or add anything, how they feel. I think, I know their executive director and their board chair, you're still board chair? Are both here, Todd? Just curious. I mean, not that it's right or wrong, just, I didn't know if they came to speak, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for letting us talk. I mean, we, we have been in favor of a downtown Frankfurt study as a board all along. But as Mayor Graham said, we do think it should be a collaborative effort. It shouldn't be a document, a static document that is something that is just a statement or a representation or an inventory of what currently is and isn't in downtown Frankfurt. It needs to be an actual working document that is going to provide some benefit and not just sit on a shelf somewhere. So, and I don't think you can do that unless you have input from every single community development-type agency as well as the citizens of the, of the community. So that's my only word of caution is that it is a collaborative effort and we're, we're supportive of it. No problems. Sir?
Commissioner Wilder?
Oh, I have, I have a, I have more general, just more general comments, I guess.
Can you sit down?
Yeah, I don't need a response. Thank you, though. This, this might sound a little non-sequitur, but we, we discussed, we heard a presentation on a TIF, TIF recently, for further development out in, out in Parkside. And I think people raised some good pros and cons for the entire thing. But this is, I bring this up as a segue into my perspective on development downtown and on the, on the role of a plan and the community can play in that. Um, I guess in a nutshell, and I'm, I'm inclined to support the, the TIF, but in this economy, we're seeing, very frankly, we're seeing, uh, the folks with the most money are making record-breaking profits. We're seeing lots of folks having a hard time even finding a job and, and local economies suffering quite a bit. Um, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna, and I recognize that it would, it would benefit us fiscally. It would benefit our bottom line, uh, to see further, further development out in Parkside. But if we're going to keep giving the big dogs a leg up, then we need to work out some way to also assist the little guys. And those are the folks who populate downtown. I mean, we need to, if we're going to keep giving, if we're going to keep giving big business a break, then we need to figure out a way to, to also, uh, very actionably help small business owners, urban infill, and, uh, development within the heart of the city. And so that's, that's the essence of my interest in, in seeing us put together, and I'm glad you mentioned an action plan. That's the essence of my interest in actually putting together an actionable, actionable, workable plan for downtown that we can hopefully even funnel some, some actual incentives and resources into instead of just putting a bunch of words on paper. Um, I agree that it, that it would need to, you know, any plan would need to be vetted by the community and have input from a number of different sources. Um, and my, and this is just my two cents. Uh, but if I, if I just had my brothers, we would see, uh, some preliminary approaches laid out by the, uh, well, by the experts in the room on economic development, which are the KCDC board and the master planner. They've still got on staff for a couple of months, right? Um, to give us, just to give us some, some, some baseline that we can then, uh, take to the rest of the community, take to DFI, take to tourism, get input, change, add to, et cetera, but go ahead and get a foundation to start working on. Um, because, you know, we, uh, we support each of the agencies in this room. You know, and we're, we're very happy to support KCDC and DFI and tourism. And they all, and there's, there's some degree of overlap between the, the groups in terms of the benefits they bring to the community. But the goals are still different and the, the charters are still, are still different. Um, and obviously, everybody needs to work together to get this done. But my, if I had my brothers, we would, we would task the folks we've, we've chartered with economic development to put together a preliminary economic development, some preliminary economic development concepts that we then use as a foundation to, to build on with everybody else. But that's...
Commissioner Turner?
I just wanted to add to Commissioner Wilder's comments that I too am a big supporter of a downtown master plan and also agree that all of the stakeholders should be involved in that, including citizen feedback. Um, and I just wanted to add that one of the things that I'd kind of like to see, and it may not be specifically pertinent to this plan, but see what options this Commission or the county or Secita may have to incentivize downtown business growth. Um, you know, as Commissioner Wilder mentioned, we just had a discussion out on the far end of town about the Parkside development. Uh, and I don't know, Ms. Jeffries probably could testify to this, but if you bring a tourist, for example, into downtown and they park and get out and go eat at a restaurant, they're more likely to visit our area attractions than if they just pull off of the interstate and stop and eat at one of the chain restaurants we have out there. So it's very clear that the downtown is the foundation of our local economy. Uh, and we have large comprehensive plans for, you know, all walks of city government and all walks of life in Frankfurt. Uh, and a downtown master plan only makes sense. And I think it's something that we can do and it's something we can do working together. And I think it's something that will be beneficial for the city. So I fully support that.
Okay. Then Commissioner Headen.
I just want to add as well that I, I do support it as well with the downtown plan. My, my questions I wrote down are, what is the plan? What's the vision? Who's all involved? What's the timeline? And most importantly, how much community involvement is there going to be in order to make sure that the plan takes what the community wants, not just what a board wants? Um, and with that, think one step further, that as nice as it is to come downtown, what are people going to be seeing when they come to downtown? Are they going to be driving the home street coming into town to drive right in to see the transportation building and then see, see downtown? Are they going to come through East Main? But to think about the next step from the plan, um, to complete, I guess, the bookend of a sandwich when you develop.
Okay, Commissioner May?
I just want to remind everybody, too, we had the streetscape committee a few years ago that did some recommendations and the citizen input pretty much was widely ignored in that case. I think what Commissioner Headen brought up is another, a good point to make sure that, that the committee can make recommendations or come back with some findings, but citizens should still have a lot of input as well because that was pretty, pretty rough times because people felt like they got ignored on, on that streetscape, um, plan when the, when the mall got opened up and the trees got taken down. So I didn't know what kind, that just made me think, because I was initially thinking that the scope-like Commissioner Wilder said we're talking about just a downtown economic development-type plan.
Right.
But then I realized too, after Commissioner's talk, that it could actually broaden out and get into some other areas. So maybe we should, and that's, I think about that too. So I think that's a good point that she brought up.
Commissioner Wilder?
That's a, that's a valid point. And I guess to clarify, and again, this is just, I mean, this is just my two cents. Um, but I guess what, you know, I obviously agree that the corridors matter.
Mm-hmm.
127, Home Street, et cetera. Um, and that the, the image and architecture of the city matter. I mean, the truth of matter is, everything matters. We're trying to make, you know, trying to, trying to make things better. But in terms of an economic development plan, I guess the, the kind of things I had, I had in mind were more like the nuts and bolts of economic development as an incentive for businesses, identifying, identifying potential areas for development as in property, you know, specific property. Maybe there's some state-owned property that can be, that they would be finally willing to invest themselves of. Because that's, all the state-owned property downtown, plainly, is an economic dead zone for us because there's no, it doesn't generate any tax revenue. It doesn't, you know, there's also some empty buildings and identifying what needs to be done to fix those buildings up and make them more viable, et cetera. So, you know, I think there's a lot of value into envisioning, uh, the broader architecture of downtown and of the, and of the corridors and the streetscapes, et cetera. But in terms of economic development, in terms of the foundation for economic development, and that's why I was, that's why, that's why my interest is in, uh, seeing KCDC lay that, lay that base work, is just kind of working on some incentives, uh, kind of nuts and bolts. And then, and then I assume that a lot of the input we'll get down the road will be more along the lines of, well, I think it would really help downtown to have a prettier corridor here, to have a roundabout here, you know, this and that. And I assume all that'll get piled on and that's pretty relevant. But if we're, if we're talking about things that we can take action on in terms of economic development, that's what I was particularly interested in, in seeing KCDC take care of. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
And then, and then I assume the folks have a lot to add to that.
Is, are there any ones, any others that you would like to make?
Hey, Joy, wait.
My name's Joy Jeffries and I'm the Tourism Director for the city and the county. And first of all, not to belabor a point, but there are several of us that do have an economic development background other than just KCDC.
Sure.
Furthermore, we have a downtown organization. That organization is charged with doing the downtown planning and implementation. And even though my colleague, Ms. Everman, is on her way out of town shortly, I don't think any of us could possibly say she has not done economic development, if you look at what's happened down there. Secondly, or thirdly, or fourthly, whatever number I'm on, um, I would maintain that at tourism, we've been doing economic development.
we've been doing economic development for the last five or six years. We have a plan, we have been implementing that plan, we have proven that we can get things done, so while I'm certainly welcome to work with the development corporation, I personally would be highly offended for the downtown organization, and quite frankly, for the tourism and riverfront development, for us to charge that organization specifically to do this. I think from the beginning, we need to have this as a collaboration with the city, with the county for that matter, because regardless of the city limits, what's in the city is also in the county, and certainly with our four organizations, and I would include the Chamber of Commerce, which certainly has a piece of, of the interest in this. I don't think there's any reason why we could not do this collaboratively, and I think that many of us in these organizations have proven very effectively that we can take public input. I think the reason with riverfront development that we have received virtually no criticism is because we did listen to the citizens, and not only listened to them, but take what they said and implement what their wishes were. And we've been continuing to do this, even with just completing a, I don't see Mr. Parrish here right now, but just completing a development plan for expanding Capital View Park. So I guess what I'm saying is, no, I don't think I'm willing to turn this over to KCDC. I think we ought to be part of that plan, and I think you would get a better plan if we were. That's what I'm saying.
I would like to also add something.
Who, who, who's she?
My name is Maryam Kekogusi. Actually, I tried to become part of the.
Now, please identify yourself.
Maryam Kekogusi. I'm an architect, and I'm very interested in the future of our town. And actually, I was trying very much two years ago to come to the meetings, and you said the meetings are closed.
No, no, no.
So there was no way to have any voice to come to them. I do feel that we need all to connect to the whole community, and there are many towns who have a certain interconnected view of making a place viable. One place which has done that is New Harmony, and they are, so many, it comes through tourism, and they had the groups of architects and town planners to come and look at the whole town and have a brainstorm, like a whole week or a whole three, four days of people getting in groups and coming with showeights and coming with ideas of how they can make their community very viable. And they wrote down a lot of the ideas, and they have done this throughout many cities in this country. So I think a green vision is very amazing, many other ideas about bringing art is very amazing, or even bringing people who are great thinkers to the community, and to shift the whole caliber of the consciousness is very good. But I feel most people are so segregated, and I have been personally not been let into groups, but maybe it was a mistake, but anyways, you said the, for example, the riverfront committee has already chosen, nothing new person could bring their ideas or to be read, so that was.
She must be included.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, to move, to move this along now, thank you, what I understand, I think from the commission, is that we're in, we are in favor of trying to have some type of a plan, and we'd like to have a resolution prepared. So for us to vote on, I think, Libby, that's what I think you all would like to have, is a resolution or something from the commission, saying that you'd like to start this plan, but we, but emphasizing that all parties would be involved, you know, I don't want us to get micromanaging of saying specific, too many specific things, my personal opinion, but we'd like to have, if Mr. Moore would prepare us some type of a resolution for us to have action on in our voting meeting on the, whatever it is, 22nd, and would you like more clarification on that, Mr. Moore?
As I, yes, as I understand it right now, you would like a resolution supporting the development of a plan for downtown Frankfurt, and you would like collaboration from various stakeholders. Do you want me to try to identify the stakeholders based on who's spoken tonight, as well as perhaps Kentucky State University, because they've got developments downtown and might want to play a part?
I don't have no problem with that.
Can I add?
Yes, Commissioner Turner.
If we were to outline the specific stakeholders, the wording that I would choose is including but not limited to, I mean, is that, that way you can, it can be more encompassing.
And that would be inviting them to participate as stakeholders, not identifying them as participants because they might say, "Thank you," but we're heading in a different direction. But that's what I have so far, but I'd love more clarification.
Commissioner Wilder.
I think there's, to clarify a couple of things, because it sounds like we're talking about two different plans. It sounds like we're talking about a development plan and an economic development plan, and they're not necessarily one and the same. As in, I recognize that a development plan has a lot to do with economic development, but the, when I talk about the nuts and bolts of economic development, I'm talking about, essentially, I'm talking about public assistance for private enterprise. So if we're cutting, if we're talking about giving a tax break to a major developer to develop out of Parkside, you know, what kind of programs and incentives can we, can we provide downtown? Like, I recognize that the riverfront development plan, for example, if or when, when that gets implemented, will have, will ride a great economic boost to downtown. And I, and I would, I would say that the riverfront development plan is a development plan, but the, and obviously, a development plan needs to, I would love to have a development plan for downtown, and obviously, that's something that would, that would include corridors and that would include streetscapes and that would require input from the entire community and from all the stakeholders, et cetera. That's fantastic, let's, let's do that. But what I'm also interested in seeing is an economic development plan that just involves the nuts and bolts of economic development in terms of incentives for businesses, you know, identifying opportunities to help businesses get started, you know, real nitty-gritty economic development stuff. If anybody else really, you know, wants to participate in, in that type of plan, then fantastic and power to you. The sense I've, I've gotten is that the type of plan that most folks are interested in participating in is, is a development plan. I know we're kind of parsing semantics, but am I making any sense here, as in?
One's, one's more narrow-focused, the economic development plan, one's broader with the overall development plan, so you're taking it.
Sure.
More things than just, you know, government incentives or for private business or on the development plan.
Right.
You're taking in streetscapes and things, yeah, you're making perfect.
And it sounds like what most of us are talking about is a development plan. In all fairness, that's what the agenda says, preparation and development plan for downtown Frankfurt. But, and, and I think an economic development component, you know, as in a pure economic development component of that is essential, as is.
The other part.
Yeah, but that is, that is a really important piece of the pie, and I think that's a piece that's particularly important to KCDC. There's also streetscape and corridors and stuff like that, that strikes me as particularly, within the purview of DFI. There's also, you know, the tourism aspects, the riverfront development, I put that in the purview of tourism, I mean, everybody's got their piece of pie to contribute to this larger plan.
Yes.
And I'm glad we're talking about a larger plan, so yeah, let's, let's prepare a resolution and do that. That's more ambitious than what I had intended to bring up anyway, which is just, I was, immediately, I was just looking for the economic, economic development piece. As much as anything, it's a response to the fact that we're providing these incentives or discussing the possibility of providing incentives.
I think there's a clarification that has not been made until this.
I think, I think you're right, and I, yeah.
I appreciate you clarifying that. It, it makes, it makes sense.
I think I can see us all on the same page.
Finally.
Yeah.
Yay.
So, so we're in the interest of preparing a resolution for a development plan?
No.
With, oh, okay, because it sounds like, it sounds like everybody was saying this. Okay, we're not on the same page. Both, right. We want, we want to see a develop, we would like to see, am I correct in assuming that we would like to see an overall development plan with input from KCDC, tourism, DFI, the community, any other relevant stakeholders, et cetera? Because it sounds like the way, the way folks are talking, that we want to see that, and that would be a great thing. We would also like to see KCDC put together, you know, some thoughts in terms of just nitty-gritty economic development, incentives, things we can do to spur business downtown, opportunities to do that, et cetera. Is that, is that fair? Is that?
Can then.
It sounds like Libby has a question or concern.
Can I just add something for Ms. Marsh? Is that, would that, I mean, could we not make it just one development plan? I mean, that would, instead of having, just roll that economic development aspect into the overall development plan?
Just, just a question.
Libby, you look to respond, please.
If you would consider. We, we were originally given a sizable price tag for this development, economic development plan, and as I understand, you have requested that we do this within existing budgets. So as you consider who you want to be involved, then I would ask that you also consider how the cost will be shared across those organizations. I think that that's a material element in this decision on your part. We're happy to step up and assume responsibility for this, but I want you to, I want you to consider all the facets that are important in making this decision.
Libby. From all this discussion we've had, now, in the conversation we had this morning briefly, in the resolution we would be preparing, is this too inclusive? Is it, do you want it loosely written, and then that you all, after you've heard this discussion, and this is the way my thinking is laying, I don't know if it's another, it'd be loosely written, but just let you know that we are in favor of this plan utilizing all the components, and then that your board address that to me, and then after, that your board have discussions, and then come back and maybe follow up with us as that, as a result of what your board and your discussion with others, maybe what role will others complete? Does that, makes that, if that makes sense to you or not?
We would have to come back to you and to the fiscal court.
Yes.
With a preliminary plan for your, your review and, and input. And as, as we have said in all of our discussions, we understand that for this to be successful, for this to be something that we implement together as a community, it must be collaborative, and we would see it as, as providing ample opportunity for citizen input as well as organizations that are involved in economic development, who would have to be at the table from beginning to end. So I think that's a commitment that our board would share, and how you write the resolution is, in my view, probably best left to, to give us that trust to accomplish that, but that's ultimately your decision.
Yeah. So, so the resolution in two weeks from now, be loosely worded, saying, as Commissioner Turner said, maybe point out certain, to ensure that certain groups are involved, and then let you all take that and.
Yes.
Discuss it, massage it, whatever, and come back.
Yes.
Follow up. Does that sound okay with y'all? Commissioner, whoa, 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 whoa. Commissioner May.
I guess my, now that, I mean, I understand, I think just the way it was on the agenda kind of got confusing for even us, because I, my initial thought was that Commissioner Wilder brought this up, he was just asking SUCIDA or KCDC just to expand.
Yes.
Their plans to just include downtown, which I thought was what you were getting at, I guess, not to put words in it. And that, for me, I'm comfortable if we just say we send a memo to KCDC saying, "Hey, would you put together an economic development plan that includes downtown?" And as, I think they kind of understand where we're coming from, just let them put that together, because that's what economic development is charged with. And then the development plan itself, the streetscape committee through the Main Street, we had the Main Street program, which y'all may or may not be real familiar with, that gets administered through, we pay DFI, whatever we're paying them now, it's been different amounts over the years. And some of the money that was used from the state to do the streetscaping down there, if we make changes of that, we'll have to give money back to, through the CBPG program, I believe. That's still under, within the guy, the timeframe, I don't know how long that timeframe went to perpetuity or how long it went, and it may be open interpretation from our legal side, but the development plan, as I was, as one of the commission, a couple of commissioners brought up, talked about, just more like streetscaping kind of thoughts, which is completely different than what, I believe, what Commissioner Wilder initially had asked KCDC to come back with, which was an economic development plan that they're charged with, just to include, what are you going to do with the downtown corridor, talking about infill, and, I know they've been working on that, but this would really just target downtown, and I don't know if I summed that up right, Commissioner Wilder or not, but that, that's what I thought you initially were talking about, which sounded fine, and shouldn't be leaving anybody, it won't leave anybody out of, because it's just talking about what Economic Development Authority was set up to do. And I mean, I'm perfectly, perfectly fine with just saying, "Hey, we'll send a memo asking you to," asking KCDC, "Would you work on a downtown development plan if others think it needs to be structured more than," I mean, I'm fine either way.
The sense, the sense I get, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that KCDC could use some formal communication from us. It would take us two weeks to pass a resolution, but we could, I mean, we could send a memo out, out tomorrow. Does that suffice in terms of communication?
I think it does suffice.
And is this?
I'm sorry, I was talking too much.
Is this all clear as mud now?
All right.
We missed this last time. I'm Terry Lovas, I'm the president of downtown Frankfurt, for the directors. I'm going to switch hats for just a minute. I'm an economic developer. I retired from the cabinet from Economic Development Department of Financial Incentives. So when I listen to talk about what you're proposing for an economic development plan, my question is, are you looking at a survey of what kind of incentives are out there, federal, state, and local, that would be a benefit to downtown Frankfurt? Or are you looking for the creation or suggestions of possible new incentives that might apply to downtown Frankfurt? And on that note, I also want to say that whatever you would probably propose for downtown Frankfurt, be county-wide or city-wide, it wouldn't be limited to just downtown Frankfurt. So I guess a clarification of whether or not you're going, you're doing a study of what existing incentives are out there, and whether or not you're creating ideas for new incentives that would benefit downtown. Does that make sense?
That's, that's a good question, and I should say, as much as anything, I mean, this is just an effort to, to. And I should say, as much as anything, I mean, this is just an effort to, to kind of get thoughts on what would, what can be done to benefit downtown, but I guess I was particularly interested in the development and the, and not just the assessing of--
A review of what existing incentives are--
And not just a review, but in, and actually, in figuring out what we could do to--
Propose new incentives.
To create some new incentives. And you're right, I mean, it's, any incentive for existing businesses, small businesses and infill, would be presumably citywide or countywide. I suspect that downtown would, would benefit.
And of course, any economic development person knows--
Fortunately.
--that downtown incentives are different than city incentives. I mean, you have historic structures you have to deal with and a sort of other things that are--
Sure.
--that are more specific to downtown. So I guess I was just looking for that clarification on whether it was a study of existing incentives, whether it's proposed new incentives, or whether it's going to be citywide, limited to only downtown structures or downtown businesses, or, you know, I think, I agree with Libby. I think she needs a little more guidance as to what her task is supposed to be in completing this plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Moore, do you feel, you had that discussion here to prepare--
Well, my question is whether I'm to prepare a resolution at this point, because my understanding is now there's going to be a memorandum that's sent to SUCIDA or KCDC, and are we going to send a memorandum, or do I need to prepare a resolution? I'm happy to do whichever--
Okay. Libby, what do you prefer, Libby?
Either would be fine. This is, this is the decision of the Commission. We just need a communication from you--
That's what I thought.
--that gives us the sense of the Commission that you want us to go forward. Our, you know, preliminarily, I would say to you that we're going to get a lot of people together and put a plan together and bring it back to you, so that you have something to see before anything gets started. I think that's the, that would be the beginning point. So I want, you know, if we're, if we're not where you want us to be after you see that plan, you can make adjustments, and we'll know then exactly how to go forward.
Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I would like to personally do this in the form of a resolution and carry the weight of a city resolution versus a city memo. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's my stance.
Commissioner Wilder.
In the interest of timeliness, could we--
Pardon me?
In the interest of timeliness, could we just do both? Could we formally communicate with them, so they can go ahead and start, you know, get some gears turning?
I don't think there's any doubt right now as to where the City Commission stands with regards to this. I don't know that if we hold off a, I mean, it's pretty clear that the Commission has stated today that we want a downtown economic development plan. And I don't think that, I mean, unless you can convince me otherwise, that a memo would enhance that feeling, especially since we are intending to vote for a resolution, and everyone has expressed their support here, all five members. I mean, unless, what, I mean, unless there's any other reason.
Okay, resolution. Commissioner, Mr. May.
I was thinking, if, if we do the resolution, I think, as Commissioner Wilder, so we just, we could do both. We could send a memo and say, "We're gonna, we're gonna, we ask you to do this, be preparing, and then we'll put in a resolution." But I don't, I don't want to be, my personal thought is, I don't want to say, do A, B, C, D, one, two, and threes, like, leave it open and just like, would you do this and let them come back and tell us, because I think they--
I agree. Open-ended memo, emphasize broad input, or, yeah, or open-ended resolution.
Oh, so, so no resolution, just do an open-ended memo?
No, I meant, I meant resolution. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine with me.
I'll hit these terms, you can toss around. Yeah, open-ended resolution, leave it up to KCDC. I guess, though, if we could, as long as we, as long as we've got them here, I was wondering if we could hear anything from, if Ralph Dart has anything to say in terms of, because I know, I know that you all have been thinking about it, and I, or Dave, frankly, because I know that, I know you all's wheels, gears have been, have been spinning since, since last week. I mean, if you have any thoughts you'd like to, you'd like to share with us. Dave, I mean, Dave, because Dave mentioned some interesting thoughts at the KCDC meeting. I don't know if he wanted to bring this up here, or, I'm sure Ralph has some, too.
I think most of all of you know me, I'm Dave Weller. I'm just one of the six KCDC board members. I guess my take on listening to the conversation, it's been helpful for us to be here, I think, and to get the gist of all the different angles and things you'd like to do. I guess it occurs to me two or three things. One is that a development plan, in fact, includes, from the specific instances I've heard, includes all the different aspects we're talking about in the development, not just economic development incentives, not just streetscapes, that you really want a vision for the entire community. And that's going to take a broad group to bring together, and it's going to require that we offer the opportunity for anybody to be a part of that that wants to. Which, which brings to question, in my mind, and then I'll, Commissioner Wilder, I'll get to your question, a specific question in a minute, which brings to question my mind in terms of what KCDC is being charged with and what, what authority it might have with regards to this. I guess we have not had an opportunity to discuss this, and I certainly have not vetted this with the Chair, but it occurs to me that it probably needs to be a community task force that involves a person designated from each of these entities that actually manages it overall, since it involves all these different elements, equal partners in the process. As far as the funding, that's certainly something we could work out in that group, or if you would like to dictate it. But I would hope that whatever resolution might be written would give us the ability to construct a task force that would include more than just us. I don't think it's just the purview of KCDC, when I've heard all the different pieces that you'd like to have in. Now, with respect to Commissioner Wilder, when we were out there, what, I think what Commissioner Wilder is making reference to is, I made some comments relative to a potential path or vision for the community, but those comments at this point are unvetted, and they just were a stream of consciousness. I have documented, Commissioner Wilder has seen it, but at this point, I think it's the kind of thing you put on the back burner, and you let the task force work, and if any of those ideas are of value, then that task force can adopt those and move forward. So I would just hope that the resolution is broad enough for us to put together a team of folks across the community who should be a part of developing a plan and figuring out a way to engage the entire community. And hopefully, through that process, we can come up with a plan that addresses all the elements that you've suggested. If you have no questions, I'll be happy to sit down.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Hope that got to your question.
You've got a question?
And, well, questions and comments. And specifically, they just brought up one interesting concept that I didn't want to, I didn't want to bring it up and take credit for it, because it wasn't my idea, but I think it's a good idea, which is, it's just the, the potential, if we were to pass the TIF, to use the revenues that actually come to us, to actually set those aside for incentives for businesses downtown. Small and simple, but that's the, I mean--
Part of my, my stream of consciousness was to take, if downtown is the question I hear over and over again as a priority, to find ways to build the capacity of downtown to grow, then we need to focus some resources there. And if there are opportunities to take potential, and it's difficult cultivating that out of an existing budget, and how difficult that is. So my concept was that no matter how this vision takes shape, that if we have a potential new source of funding, whatever that is, we might, in fact, create a disciplined approach to taking and pulling off some of those additional revenues, which we don't have today, and directing those towards specific development goals. So I would hope that our plan would provide a framework within which you might consider that, and that if we are really focused in terms of where we take these new revenues, if we take a portion of those and focus on that element, then maybe we can have a real impact. We've spent a lot of time talking about downtown. I think we need to focus our resources on actually developing and transforming downtown into what the people want it to be.
Sure.
I'm not sure I have the answers to that. In fact, I'm sure I don't, but I'm looking forward to hearing what those answers could be. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I do have--
No, no, that's not for you.
I do have a broader question for the, for the Commission, just for clarity on this.